Welcome again.
Yeah, there you go.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, but before we do that, I'd like you to remain standing for a moment of silence. My pledge of allegiance-
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for the victims of the Madri Stonem Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. Thoughts and prayers to the families and friends. Announcements, item two on the agenda. Senior Center, St. Patrick's Day Celebration, Monday, March 12th at 12:00 noon. Advance reservations required, $10 per person. If you're interested in attending, contact the Senior Center. The minutes, February 5th, 2018. Does the Board have an opportunity to review the minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I hear a second.
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Tonight we have an appointment to the Board of Assessors. We have received correspondence from Mr. Peter Mars. A little bit of Mr. Mars's background. He was a middle school math teacher and science teacher for 34 years. This was in upstate New York.
No, in Newtown, not Redding, Connecticut.
Redding, Connecticut. Audiovisual coordinator. He says here, the days before the tech world came about. Seventh grade team leader and student assistant team leader, surrogate administrator for the middle school. Served as president and vice president of the Teachers Association and is chairman negotiating committee with the Board of Education. Became involved in real estate sales for about 15 years and became familiar with market analysis and appraisal process. Mr. Mars holds a bachelor's science degree and master's of science degree in education and a six-year degree in administration. Presently acting as vice president of the Chestnut Hill Meeting Club. I would entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Peter Mars to the Board of Assessors.
I make a motion to appoint Peter Mars to the Board of Assessors through June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up. You ready for the class? Are you ready for the class?
Yep. Whatever it is, I might have to turn these off.
Or down.
Next on the agenda, town clerk's announcement that the last day to withdraw nomination papers is February 28th. Last day to register to vote is March 13th. Item five on the agenda is public forum, citizens' comments. I'd like to remind the audience there's a three-minute limit in that matters presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor a decision made the night of the discussion or presentation unless the topic is specifically identified on the agenda. Do you have anyone interested in-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to ask why it's only three minutes considering that's just small time. Shouldn't it be five minutes? Isn't that usually customary?
It's three minutes. Mr. Chairman?
That's on this point.
Just wondering.
As you know, Mr. Chairman, we've had several public members that have come and spoken, sometimes upwards of 45 minutes, and one of the things that was usually the typical result was to either speak to the town administrator or speak to a respective board, and if we had done that in the first place, oftentimes we can, you know, come to some agreement. So, I understand that's one of the reasons is to be able to adhere to the agenda.
Thank you. No one for public forum?
Stay here, Bob there.
Come on up.
I want to waste my three minutes here.
It's been a lot longer.
Jerry Finn, Grove Street. And I just wanted to, first of all, compliment the folks who put out the pamphlet. I think it helped to explain valuation tax summary. They did a nice job. Came out, I think, very well. And I noticed in that pamphlet, if you look at the percentage of budget dollars relative to the budget for education, you've got a, basically almost a 60 percent cost of your budget is indeed for education. That's all forms of education. That's a rather large expenditure, as we all know, and it's one that we've talked about for numerous times. I guess the point I'd like to ask of the committee, see if you would deem it worthy for your next meeting, would be to look at doing an audit of the school, BMR in particular, BBT if you wish, and have that audit go into quite some detail. I think it's pretty traditional when you have a change of venue with the administration that, as I looked it up on the state web, most towns ask for an audit. I think one of the things that'd be important for this town, since this is six out of every $10 we have, that we would do an audit in advance because all too many times, I think everybody will realize, the taxpayers are the recipient of a, oh gee whiz, guess what happened from the last administration to this one. We don't need to do that. We're smarter than that. Let's make sure that we have an audit. We know what it's going to cost us. We have a good idea of what it is and how the system is working or not working, where the skeletons are hidden or not hidden, and get a good handle on that. Otherwise, I don't know how I could possibly vote in favor or not in favor of any town overriding without 60 percent of the budget being known. Thank you.
Thank you. I make the request that we include this on the next agenda.
Sure. I think it would be prudent and it would be timely to do that.
Can we also reach out to the school and find out their last one that they had? Thank you.
Well, if I may, Mr. student, they would have a regular audit that's required if you-
Right, this is something-
This one I think is more of a surgical strike on particulars or looking for things that people who are well versed on that know what to look for. You're going to get a regular audit, everybody does.
Yes, that's financial audit.
And I think it should be done on basically any school, anybody wants to do it. But I think we need to know that if we're spending 60 cents of every dollar before we go into a-
I know I don't vote on an override with that kind of a budget.
And it appears to me, there appears to be a couple different budgets that have swung around. I guess I understand some of the reasons, rationales why. I'm not comfortable. I think I need an audit.
We'll take that up. I'll ask to be involved, be involved, Mrs. Reggio.
Richard Hurtos, 70, Quaker Street. Mr. Finn brought up a good point about auditing. Since we've had four different accountants over the last three years, has the town had any type of auditing of their books?
Annually.
Of course we do.
Annually, and it's done by the state or in-house?
It's an independent assessing.
Independent? Okay. Thank you very much.
And we've had three.
The Brown Company.
Yes, it has been. Ari Brown has been the town's-
And we typically get the report during the summer because I know I'm usually sitting pond side or pool side reading the report.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ronald Marcos, 12 Albert Drive, here in town. As some of you may or may not know, I am running for town selectman. It's not an announcement, just to let you know, but it pertains to some of the questions I've had over the past few weeks. And in my opinion, those questions are justified, given the history in the last decade of the town finances and the deficit, which is alarming to me. And I think it's alarming to most people that we've run a deficit for over 10 years. I've asked some questions in the past couple of weeks, some strong questions. One member of the finance committee was a little bit resistant or, you know, maybe not too happy with my questions. Some of my questions have maybe been classified as nitpicking, which any taxpayer in this town asking these questions with this town's financial history is simply not nitpicking at all. I think my questions are justified. I'm here trying to do the right thing to move this town forward, and that's what I'm looking forward to. I know everyone's worked very, very hard. A lot of my questions were answered today when I had a meeting with Ms. Callahan, and thank you for that. I got a lot of information that took care of the questions I was going to ask tonight. So, that's all I have for now. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Moving on, correspondence. We have communication from Town Council, KP Law. Reports the success in completing an examination of titles to the parcels of land, budding Paulette Way, Twin Pond Circle, for the purpose of determining the current owner and mortgages affecting each parcel of land. This project was completed on December 11th, 2017, and these results that we posted are filed with the town administrator's office.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this again is just a follow-up of town meeting vote, which actually committed both Paulette Way as a form of a vote and Twin Pond as accepted as public way. So, there are a number of steps that we're taking from everything, from taking over utility polls on those properties to also making sure that the title searches with the identified parcel. So, keeping you up to date as we move along on that process.
Thank you. Blue Wave, we have a status report for the solar project that's ongoing in Westport, and it looks as if that will be completed, the target is to get it completed by June 17th of this year. As you know, we've, the town has an agreement with Blue Wave in that we'll get the S-Rex for a certain amount of electricity that's consumed by municipal buildings and save about $20,000, $21,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were going to do per annual, about $3,700 off of our utility bills per year for the next 20 years.
Next, we have Massachusetts Department of Agriculture Resources. They've instituted a program that promotes and sustains agriculture, beekeeping. And basically, people that live in the outlying areas like Mr. Finn might be interested in setting up some beehives. The program, there's a set of pamphlets to go along with it, and it advises how you go about, you know, general knowledge. New business, joint poll relocation, I'll hear a motion to vote to approve and sign the poll petition for National Grid, Horizon, and the town. But the relocation of the polls, they're required to be moved along Central Street.
Mr. Chairman, there's 11 polls that will be moved, correct?
11 joint home polls along Central Street, that's correct.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you know, this is part of our MassWorks grant project, which will be commencing later this spring. We've had the utility companies out, along with myself and Highway, and this is a result of trying to move that petition process forward. You, as a board, had actually voted to move the petition before actually seeing the diagrams in the interest of time because this is what typically delays construction projects. And since we've really committed to trying to be on time and under budget as much as possible with the hopes that we can perhaps tap into more funding to continue further on this project on Central Street in the future, this is what you have in front of you. So, tonight, yes, you'll be actually signing it. It's not the entire board. Actually, for the utility petition, it's signed by the secretary of the board, and then it is certified just by the town clerk to attest to it.
Show them.
So, we're looking, grant permission to the secretary to sign the poll relocation?
Correct.
And that is the 11 polls from approximately 39 Central Street up to approximately 158 Central Street.
And yes, because of, this was happening when we had snow on the ground, and we actually moved the project right around the time, right after that we had the blizzard, so it wasn't really prudent. Typically, they'll put up flags to see it, but I've already talked with our designated engineer and also the utility companies so that before that actual move takes place, people will be able to see that.
So, I make a motion to our secretary, to the secretary on our board, to sign the petition for the poll, joint poll relocation.
Second. Aye.
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 Okay.
I have Mike Packet, Mastart, announcement, the potential?
Yeah, that comes a little bit later in the town administrator update. The next thing on the agenda would be the special town meeting discussion and presentation.
All ready.
Okay. Just for the board's edification, Tim, our wonderful audiovisual man, has told us this would probably be the best for us. Actually, what I'll do is I'll have you sit here, Justin. We're going to ask our finance director, our accountant, to come up. We have a presentation for the board. Obviously, many of you have been involved with the town's financial discussions. As you know, I came in here a year and a half ago, and as a new and first town administrator, was looking at the entire financial picture for the town. There's a lot that has already been discussed with this board and the finance committee, not only this past fall, but all of last year. Some of those things that we have done and taken prudent steps in looking at making sure that the Millville's town finances are in as best order as possible, and to get a full view of it, has taken a little bit of time, but not so much time to not understand that there has been a number of years which has contributed to why Millville is in a particular financial position that it is currently, and why we're actually talking this evening about setting a special town meeting and discussing the need for an override. I just want this board to know that for tonight, this is a presentation that is geared towards each one of you. It's a presentation to remind you of where we have been and why we are here. It is one of those things that I would hope that as financially prudent members of this board, in understanding that we have been working very closely, not only with the Department of Revenue, but also with the school department and every single other department in this community, to try to make sure that we are setting the right priorities. Having said that, for those of you in the audience who don't know, this is Justin Cole. He is our finance director slash town accountant. He is somebody who has been working with us since I came on and had a change of our town accountant after I had noticed that there were some things that were particularly alarming to me as an administrator of not being able to have certain types of information at hand when I first came in. The board was very supportive of the changes that we made in our financial accounting department, and I must say, it has been an incredibly well-executed change over a period of time where we have taken the responsibilities of this town's financial accounting to a whole new level, something that didn't exist before where a lot of things were being done by hand, and things were so outdated that there was concern that there was always the possibility for not getting a true financial picture. So, there are a couple new members on the board that came in partway through this process, and that might not have been part of that entire picture, but I think we have tried to do a very good job of hosting a number of Board of Selectmen workshops, a number of meetings to improve communications with the school and the school board, and we have also done that rigorously at the departmental level. So, tonight, we're going to put a presentation before you that talks about a special town meeting and the need for that. You get to be the, yeah, you can either use that or you get to do the page down. So, we're here tonight to actually, I would just hit the page down. Yeah, there you go. We're here to talk about why the town of Millville is at a fiscal crossroads. How did we get here and why are we talking about an override now? As you've heard, a couple people allude to, they've talked about deficits, they've talked about a trend. That's something that is not new to the understanding of this board. Matter of fact, there's been conscious decisions made by this board in the past, where some of you have not been on, to actually take steps to balance its budgets each year. We, as administrators and as departmental heads, have to produce a balanced budget, and you have to authorize that as you go forward for town meeting. Having said that, how did we get here and why are we talking about this at the moment? There's a couple things that I want to bring to the town's attention. A lot of people are always talking about, why aren't we growing? Why can't we bring in more revenues? I wanted to put up this population graph because really, there has been no real growth in this town's population. It really is truly a bedroom community, and we have been sustaining at about a little over 3,000 for our population. That means there's no big boom in housing, there's no big boom in building permits occurring that is going to actually help us address what has been a reoccurring deficit that has been patched for many, many years in different ways, some of which our finance director, myself, are absolutely not supportive of doing and continuing in the future, but it was something that was a patent of trying to produce a balanced budget. As you can see, even the census from last year shows us actually declining by about 200 residents. So, having said that, I also want to talk about the fact that we do not have a real growth in overall assessed value for this town. If you look at this particular graph, which is taken right off the Department of Revenue, you're going to see that we hit like a mid-year point, a mid-high point in the year 2008, where the overall assessed values for this town were somewhere in the range of $335 million. That's all the properties collectively together. And remember, every year, the Board of Selectmen have to set a tax rate, and that tax rate has to be reflective and assessed on whatever kinds of evaluations that we have set on each one of these properties. If you look at the overall trend from 2008 all the way to 2018, you will see a continued decline in overall total assessed value. That has implications for how can we collect revenue to support our budgets. It's important to note that it's been almost a $90 million drop that occurred from 2008 to 2014, and even where we're at now, we're still nowhere near the $335 million level. Speaking with our new principal assessor, the reason why this is really important is when people start saying, generate revenue, you know, to try to support a budget, if you have a $16.56 per 1,000 tax rate, how that translates to an overall assessed value is you would need at least $1 million to actually have $16,500 towards your budget. We would need $10 million to get up to $165,000 to support our budget. The reason why this is important is people will always say, we need more business in town, okay? If we were to bring in a brand-new business, you would need a business that's sizable. And even at a $10 million business, which we don't have a supporting infrastructure for in this town, no water, no sewer, to think about a $10 million business moving into town to try to even just get $165,000, I want you to keep that in the back of your head because when I start to show you the overall decline in what has been our overall revenues and how we've had to use one-time resources to patch a deficit, that $165,000, even if a $10 million company were to move in tomorrow, still will not fix this problem. So, we have had flat population growth, we have flat or falling total assessed property values in the town, and I know people are going to ask, why are we doing an override now? Aren't residents already overtaxed? And I wanted to show you these two graphs that just recently came out based on the tax rates that were set for each community across the Commonwealth. The first one on the left, you'll see it says the change in the average single-family tax bill, and you'll see a lot of colors. And the chart is below in terms of the legend, you'll see the coloration of yellow all the way to bright red. What this does is it maps out where there has been an overall dollar change in assessed property values. I know I'm bringing this up because recently, people did get a tax bill actually put together in terms of a tax rate that was set by this board in overall valuations. They did see an increase. They saw an increase which is coming in the Rose area, about $250 to $500, the average single-family tax bill went up in this town. I want to point out, there's a lot of rose-colored ones up there. We are not alone as a community that had this kind of dollar change. And the reason why it's important is because it really does relate to the overall assessed values for properties and why our town, when people say, are we being overtaxed? I need to put it in perspective that when you look at that to the left, you might say, yeah, we did see an increase on the average single-family tax bill, but so did a lot of other communities, and we're not the worst, as you can see the highlighted darkest communities. To the right, the average single tax bill, you can see, we actually are dead middle of the center. We have a tax bill amount that is about $4,537 based on this past tax rate that was set back in December. That puts us in the middle of pack. We're in the green section. So, when people say, are we overtaxed? When you look at us in terms of the entire Commonwealth, I would say no. As an administrator, I have to say no. Does it mean that we don't have people who struggle to meet their tax obligations? Yes. We have people who go into foreclosure? Yes. We have people who ask for payment plans? Yes. We have a lot of people who struggle to pay their taxes. But in general, if I'm looking at the entire town, for those people who do, and where this tax, average tax family bill was, we're smack dab in the middle of it. So, when people are asking, are we overtaxed? I thought another good, healthy thing would be to do a check with the rest of the communities around us. And when you start to do a regional comparison for where we have been for the past eight years, from 2010 to where we are currently, you will see, I've taken a broad spectrum of communities that are both small, Upton being 2,100- of communities that are both small, Upton being 2,100 residents, Sherburne being 4,100, Hope Dale 59, all the way up to our neighboring communities that are bigger, like Uxbridge, 14,000, Blackstone is a little bit more, about 10,000. And then we have our neighboring communities like Milis and Mendon and even Holliston that are all within this area. If you look at the trend from 2010 to 2018, everywhere that you see an orange number in the column where Millville is, we have been the lowest tax rate in the entire region. When it started out in 2010, we were at 11.79, the highest rate at that time was at 17.44 per thousand. When you go all the way up to each year, you will consistently see that we have actually been the lowest tax rate in the region, up until 2015 and 2014, where we were just slightly above, and for whatever reasons that is, that is what happened during those time periods. But I will also put a caveat that Hope Dale itself has a split tax rate, and for every other one of those years, we were still lower than somebody who's using commercial tax split in their rate to help offset it for the residents, and we were still lower in all of those years. So when people ask, "Are we being overtaxed?", I need to point that out, and I think the Department of Revenue would also assert that we're not overtaxed. The next piece, people will say, "We have a spending problem, you know, we're out-of-control budgets." And I have to again point to this, that our revenues are really flat and our growth is flat, based on valuation from the last 2013 all the way to 2018, to our overall growth. Our town really only grows in terms of tax dollars somewhere between about 20,000 and 30,000. We have one little blip up when they put the transmission lines in, that was a one-time thing where we had 65,000 that came in in that one year, but overall, including the negative years of 2014, which actually hurt this community and was before my time, with the whole area for assessors, that was sometime where we only took in $9,000 in increased tax dollars to spend. So we're not talking about having a huge push in our revenue side for money coming in, in terms of growth. Another thing that I think is important to point out, aside from the questions that people are going to have, and I'm going to try to address the kinds of questions that have been asked of me and what I think most people would ask. They'd ask, you know, "Is our budget really growing out of control?" I just tried to show you that our overall tax increase to support our budget is at the highest $30,000 in a given year, and below that on the lower ones. Here you can see, our budget is ranging anywhere from 5.1 million in the year 2013 all the way to 2016, where we were only at 5.5 million. So when you look at where are we really growing, it's almost a flat notion of what our overall budget is. Now, we have had some things within those expenditures that we have to finance, we're obligated to do it, whether it's public safety, education, and you'll see the largest portion of those bars are going to our public education, and you'll see those areas have increased. Actually, in the area, in the year of 2017 and 18, I pulled this off of something else so I didn't have time to actually put in the bars, but for 2017 and 2018, that budget goes from about 5.8 to 6.1 million. It's always a little bit under 200,000 or just 200,000 that we grow each year in terms of overall expenses that are being asked to be put into the budget, but remember, I told you, we're only growing tax-wise, by about $30,000 on the high side per year for increased revenue. So if you were looking, we know that the school has a contribution trend, and that is a contribution trend that goes back to 2006 up through 2018. This is not to vilify the school, the school does have needs. We also have been pretty hard-lined with asking for certain things and documents from the school, some of which have come to us and some of which we are still working with the administration to adhere to. I think that the school committee in fairness to it has tried to work with this town, is going to continue, but we do continue to have a struggle with coming up with what we consider to be an appropriate amount that we're trying to grow towards in supporting the school. So this is just to show you that the trend has gone from anywhere from 8% and higher, above 10%. So the reason why I say this is we're still balancing a budget. We're obligated by law to balance a budget. So I just told you, very little tax revenue is coming in to support even minor changes to our budget. So the reason why I put that graph up before is because it's important to show one where some of our reserves have been going. You know, you're going to hear people say, "Well, I don't believe we should be using reserves," Finance Director, myself included, "to balance our budget." But that is exactly what has been happening over many years, and to the point where now those reserves are no longer there to actually patch the actual budget. But the overall average increase, even if I were to take and modify those percents all the way going back to 2006, is the increases to the school average about 4.58%. But remember, we're only allowed to raise our levy limit by 2.5%. So it's an important thing because communities want quality education facilities, and most communities understand that there's a level of expectation, and this town has answered that call on many occasions each year to the best of its ability and has actually, you know, had to say that it couldn't sustain it when it got to the point in the last several years where it became too much to be able to say, "We can't find the money." Because the way that we've been supporting our school and our budgets has been through some reserves, and we'll talk about what one-time reserves are and why they're a big no-no, and why we're at the position that we're in today. So if we are talking about using one-time reserves, how have I been balancing the budget in the year and a half that I've been here? Right? So one of the things I had to look at is, okay, is there any places in one-time revenues that I can try to, you know, increase so that we might be able to use it to balance the budget? So I put this out because this is really important. We'll have people say that, people who aren't paying taxes, and I thought that was a valid point when I became Town Administrator here, and I really looked into it. And I did find out, there were people who were on payment plans, young, old, business people, some people who just went through some rough times, other people who had been on it far too long, and we got rid of that. We implemented a program last July where everyone was coming off their payment plans. I presented that to the Board, we did a tax title collection effort, and in over, in about a year's time period, we brought in $250,000. Within the last fiscal year, starting on July 1st, it's more like $180,000, so that's what I'm looking towards in terms of what we raised this year. I've done changes in our utility agreements. The old town hall had really hefty bills associated with it from its telephone, its heating, and its electrical. Just in renegotiating agreements and bringing us into a technological era that actually has improved our efficiency here, that's a $30,000 one-time saving bump that we're going to get, that will get, continue to be incorporated, but that's a way of trying to help offset whatever we save there will likely go into the school, because that's the way our reserves go. Capital equipment, we sold a fire truck and bought a new fire truck for substantially less and created a town-wide capital account. Again, it's one-time revenues. We renegotiated an agreement with the town of Mendon, which is going to save us on the order of $50,000 per year for the next five years. Those are substantial administrative changes that would not have taken place if it wasn't for this Board's support and myself initiating with our Finance Director. So we're keeping afloat with those kind of one-time revenues. Now, Justin's going to talk about the use of one-time revenues here, because here I am trying to raise one-time revenues, and we had one-time revenues through a variety of different sources in town, and he's going to talk about what's happened to those revenues that are one-time and why they've declined.
So the use of one-time revenues has increased substantially over the budget processes in the last few years. So, I mean, one-time revenues, you know, some pretty common examples are, you know, the town gets a free cash number certified every year, so that's the amount of money that we bring in in revenue over our expenses. Stabilization overlay surplus has to do with the assessors, it's an amount of money left over after all abatements and exemptions are granted for a year. You know, and one-time revenue sources can be, you know, a number of things. I mean, it basically boils down to the town received, you know, a non-recurring payment in nature that we don't reasonably expect to get again and use in future budgets like this. So just very quickly, the town has relied more and more heavily, as the years have gone on, on these one-time revenue sources in order to make a balanced budget. And so while it got those budgets balanced, it's kicking the can down the road because eventually, you run out of one-time revenue sources. You know, there are some revenue sources such as free cash, which you reasonably expect to probably get something in future years, but again, that's not a number that you can forecast trend or reliably expect to balance your budget. And so the concerning point here is that while these budgets have been balanced, it is at the expense of using these one-time revenues, and as it stands at FY18, we're using the highest level of one-time revenues that the town has seen in some time. And so looking at, you know, FY19 and beyond, the question becomes, you know, again, generally speaking, you know, taxes are growing by 2.5%, you know, taxes are roughly 76% of total revenues that we get. Our other local revenues, state aid, other money that comes in that is used to balance the budget is growing at not even a half a percent. You know, so when we look at our total, 100% of our revenue is basically growing 2.5%, you know, while our expenses are far outpacing that. To demonstrate this fund balance is, we look at the accounts that we have on the books that collect money, that are sources of money that we can use to fund the budget, and some of these are one-time and some of these are recurring. The overall 10-year trend, though, is again, the town relies more and more heavily on these resources and it depletes our financial position. You know, I think the biggest example, again, that we use is the stabilization fund. I mean, the town should strive to keep a stabilization balance, cash on hand, in case there's something that comes up, there's some kind of emergency, the town needs to respond to some change that was not reflected in the budget. As we go along, we see that, you know, basically what this graph shows is that, you know, expenses are outpacing revenues and the town's use of these reserves are increasing to the point where we're getting to an unsustainable level in terms of being able to, again, balance a budget based on a, you know, 2.5% a year revenue growth.
So I know a lot of people are going to say, "What are we doing?" You know, I tried to point and reflect on how we're trying to actually bring in any one-time revenues to help support us this year and potentially through the budget process that will begin, I mean, that will be set at town meeting in May. But in addition to that, there has been something that's been very unprecedented that's been taking place in this town. And I know that I got very strong direction as the first Town Administrator that came in a year and a half ago, to go after grants and to do it with as much passion and tenaciousness that I'm used to, but not knowing where that was going to actually transpire. People look around town, you'll see buildings being demolished, you're going to see roads being constructed, you're going to see playgrounds that have been put in, you're going to see plans that are using technical experts to put forward so that we can access more grant money, you're going to see, you know, a reflection of a financial management practice, grant that has actually been used to actually reform all of our financial practices here at the town hall, along with upgrading our technologies. We no longer send out our actual pay to people in town, we're not putting them in terms of doing them by hand, they're now electronically put together, and there's so many other things that we've actually done. We're going to be launching our website rather soon, things that are going to be changed that help the town and help, I think, communicate the needs of the town. If we were to incorporate, whether it's a mass work grant for a million, all the way down to a total of $1.54 million, that has come into this town. I can't use any of that to pay for the wages of the people who work here, none of it. All I can do is say that if I wasn't doing this part with this Board's direction and we weren't getting this kind of grant money, you'd see a lot of things not happening, and I think we would be in a much more precarious position. But because of some of this grant money that we've been able to obtain, it has allowed us to get the technical expertise, to uncover what really needs to be done in this town and how to continue to carry it forward. So when people say, "Aren't there any grants out there?", yes, there are, and we've indicated that we've done really, really well, but it's not going to pay for the operational needs of the employees of this community, it's just not going to, because they don't So Justin, we've now actually presented to the Board of Selectmen, and it's been on our website, a three-year projection budget. We have now also revised that based on the figures that we are midway through the year, and I think, Justin, I'd like you to talk a little bit about what this budget projection, and this is the budget projection that we're going with forward, and why we're talking to this Board about needing an override, because you can clearly see that you will have a net operating loss.
So this was originally, the original projection was done in May of 2017, updated and presented to the Board, I believe, in June of 2017, and this has been a dynamic document that's updated every 90 days or so for both the revenue side and the expense side. The revenue side, there is not a lot of discussion on, as I previously mentioned, the town is mostly funded via the tax base, which will grow at 2.5% a year. There is not much else to talk about on the revenue side, so for the purpose of this slide, we're focusing primarily on the expense side. So if we look at the growth in the budget over the next three years, you know, we end up in the projected FY 2021, over a million dollars upside down, right? And so when we talk about, you know, what are the items that really drive these budgets, you know, these projections don't include hiring more people, they don't include capital projects or buying new equipment. This is basically maintaining status quo without the use of one-time revenues. You know, again, the town has relied very heavily on one-time revenues in the past. The one-time revenue balances have been reduced to the point where it is not feasible to budget to use them anymore. You know, just some quick things in here, okay, well, what drives our expenses to, you know, outpace our revenues by so much? You know, if we look at the cost of health insurance on an annual basis, so whether you're a town or you're an employee or you're, you know, you run your own business, the cost of health insurance is not an expense that is easily controlled, it's not easily trended or forecasted. This projection bases health insurance on a rather meager 7% growth per year over these three years. You know, for FY 19, we think that it actually will be pretty darn close to that number, and FY 20 and 21, I mean, who knows? There's nobody that can project that out that far enough, but, you know, again, we've used the 7% a year to grow that versus our 2.5% growth on our revenues.
Justin, can I add one thing about the health insurance, just so that you know, that we took a very hard line on cutting costs out of this budget last year. It was our first budget together, and one of the things that the employees did, and the majority of our employees are part-time, this community went to a part-time environment during two back-to-back recessions, which, you know, basically were concluding around 2009. It's never recovered from that point in time. But the health insurance piece, when we looked at it last year, we had several retirees who had been, you know, using hospitalization and services at a much higher rate. Last year, our initial health insurance rate came in at 15.9% as an increase. People who were solid, dedicated citizens for many years, and they used the services at the time that they had to. We took a hard position, and I had to meet with all the town employees about trying to restructure the actual tier benefit to try to bring that cost down, and so the town employees did sacrifice that element of service because they understood what I was trying to do. So at the end of the day, we were able to lower that cost from 15.9% down to about 8.9%, and this year, we expect it to come in lower because we don't have as much usage. But that's an important thing. Not many people would understand that the employees of this town, knowing what we're up against, were willing to do that, to try to even save the small amount of money that it was able to save, because many people who are part-time are not receiving health insurance benefits, but the ones that are not receiving health insurance benefits, but the ones that were and the ones that have the need for it were willing to make that sacrifice. So even in that health and human service in the last year, there's already been an adjustment that has been made in the town hall and the town employees.
Just a few other items on this, you know, the the town has, you know, very few smaller costs, right? So I mean, a lot of what drives the budget figure is, you know, there's some larger bills, you know, so trash and recycling, townwide trash and recycling, so we've budgeted that to grow at, you know, three, three percent a year, again, versus two and a half percent revenue growth. The vocational, the tuition and transportation to the vocational school systems, we've budgeted that at five percent a year for each year, you know, against a two and a half percent revenue growth. BMR, we've we've done at five percent a year versus two and a half percent. So I mean, if you think of the total costs of what some of these services are, growing at three or five or seven percent a year versus two and a half percent on revenue growth, I mean, it's 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 it becomes much clearer to see how in year three, you know, that opens up to a, you know, a million dollar deficit.
So people will ask, can't we cut our way out of this? And I tried to explain how, and I have done it individually to many people and at all the meetings that I've been at, I talked about how small our budget is, especially on the municipal side, okay? So can't speak to the school side, but if I were to say, can we cut our budgets, I'm gonna use some examples. We have our library, senior center, veterans, we have our fire, EMT services, our town hall departments, all of them, the highway. If I were going to cut all the wages and get rid of everybody in the library, the senior center and the veterans services, that would be seventy-nine thousand dollars. If I did it with the fire department, got rid of all of our part-time EMTs, who by the way, for a thirteen-hour shift, were making fifty dollars when I came here, we raised it last year as one of our one administrative feeling of responsibility to try to keep our EMS stable because we had a revolving door with it, we increased that to seventy-five dollars for a thirteen-hour shift. I don't know anybody who would work thirteen hours covering for the well-being of this town for that kind of money. So when we talk about eliminating that and eliminating two full-time firefighters, we're talking about, you know, getting rid of all of the services in there to the tune of two-hundred and seven thousand. I can eliminate their wages, then I can eliminate everybody in the town hall, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, okay? That's the operating, you know, wages of of this town and the highway department. I can X out all those people and we're still upside down. So when you tell me to cut, as a prudent administrator, I'll sit there and tell you, who do you want to serve you because then the whole buildings will be empty. There's no, there's no hiding of the math, it's it's there. Now, if I wanna keep the police on, because nobody else will be available to do services in town, yeah, that's a four-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-dollar item, but if I join it with something else, you know, you're still gonna be upside down. So I just want people to understand, when you ask me to cut my senior center, we're talking about an operating budget of forty-six thousand dollars. Jill Anderson is a super senior center director. She actually worked for this town for almost a year with no pay before we brought her on part-time, before my time. She makes seventeen dollars an hour, she's ten dollars less per hour than any other senior center director in this entire region. So when you tell me to cut her wages, what else are you gonna cut in that budget? I told you, it's forty-six thousand dollars for the entire senior center budget. So if I put that with the library, with the veteran services, you can see why we're talking about peanuts here. So if you wanna cut, I I'll ask anybody to come in and figure out where you're gonna come up and make a six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar cut to existing services without harming all of these people because that's all that's in these budgets typically. So I ask you to think about that. So what do we have to do to fix the problem and avoid receivership? Nobody hired me to be the first town administrator to come in and gloss everything over. You did ask me to work really hard to find whatever one-time revenues we could find, to go after grants, to actually produce a balanced budget and to be direct with you when I needed to be. So we're at that point, after a year and a half of trying to get a lay of the land and where we're at, bringing in, I think, the technical experts that have, you know, are very, that are very highly regarded, may I add, to the Department of Revenue. So we have exceptional team, financial people working on this. Back in the spring of last year, our town chairman here did a great presentation to the community highlighting very similar things that we were already highlighting tonight. We set out that evening to set priorities and the priorities that was the number one thing was to right-size our budget. We had to get a handle on what is real growth look like. Our finance director has put that financial forecast together and we have mapped out a plan of where we have to go from that point in time. We didn't have that before. This board set out using grant money and using the expertise from the Department of Revenue, the Division of Local Services and our finance people here to improve our financial practices. We've upgraded all our technologies, we've improved all the skillset of the people who are working in the area for finances and and financial management and we have set out and I believe we've realized that priority, pursuing grants. I was asked to do that, we said we would do it, we committed to that, we've done that. Collections and delinquency, I pointed out earlier, we've done a bang-up job for anybody who has looked at what has not been collected in the past for this town. But even with that, even the small amount that still exists, we've already talked about selling off land in this town that may have come to us by tax title. Again, one-time sources hopefully get put on the tax roll, but still is not gonna change the dilemma that we have. Following a capital plan, we have been trying to do that outside of having any capital reserves and we're doing it by getting grants. We're lucky, grants come and go, sometimes you get them one year, you don't get them for three or four years. We don't have a regular grant writer. I sit here many a late nights trying to put those things together in hopes that we can make the case for the town. We've done well, but that doesn't mean we're always gonna be able to do well and that's no way to run a town. Town should have reserves put in place for its capital plan and to maintain its existing infrastructure. And three was the, the last thing was to set the priority, was we asked the Blackstone-Milville Regional School District, in particular, our vice chairwoman here has been very adamant about wanting to get a three-year budget plan. I will say, because the chairwoman of the school board is here, she was dogged to get the current superintendent to get that to us. We had that presented to us in November, we have an idea of what that meant in terms of financial forecasting. I don't think we're in agreement right now about what the forecast said and where the initial budget presentation that was put forth by the superintendent recently had presented to us. So however, in terms of priority setting, we've done all of those things. So I put that out there because the only way to get beyond this is to think about getting this to the townspeople and having the townspeople decide which direction they wanna go. You know, we can only put together the right information coupled with the facts and the history that this town has. As an administrator, at the end of the day, we gotta balance a budget and anybody who knows anything about trying to do that, the state would like to see this community try to do this on their own. It's best for the community to try to do it on its own because we know our budget's the best and we know how to fix those kinds of things. But it's a matter of resolve and the only way to go forward with that is to continue to, I think, talk the straight talk and at the same time, allow the townspeople to understand even more where we're at. And this isn't the first time they're gonna hear it, they've already heard it, they hear it at our meetings regularly, they hear it from the finance committee. So this isn't about putting it out any further, we can't. And in order for us to balance the budget going into fiscal year nineteen with the prospect of the year after, there's just no way. So I would respectfully ask this board to consider setting a special town meeting for the ability of this town to make a decision. Obviously, we do not have the figures tonight for you, that's not the purpose of this meeting, it will be if you decide to set a special town meeting as we go forward to refine those figures. Obviously, we'd also be working with the Department of Revenue and the school department to come up with, you know, what we consider to be the best scenario for an override that will be put towards our operations. And the only way to do that is really to, you know, make sure that once we have the definitive date that we would be putting it forward to public, that we're asking for something that is realistic and that everyone can live by. And that's the most important thing. Any community that has ever done overrides and jointly done them for both municipal and school operations, it has to be something that you're firmly committed to living by. I know I am as an administrator, I know this board has taken a conservative tone on everything that it's done and wants to do the same thing, but at the end of the day, you still have to acknowledge that there's no way I can shake money out of a tree, I just can't do that. And I'm sorry and I regret that I can't because if I could, I would love to do that for the town of Millville. Thank you.
Thank you for your, your effort, Justin, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. You stay, you guys have maybe other questions?
I will.
So I don't think anybody here is, anyone surprised that. I mean, the trends of the finance committee, town budget, I mean, these are things that we've been hearing right along. We always hope for something better to happen, to come along, but.
I guess all a few.
Like a soul. But that's not before this board. So with this, we will then hold public information meetings?
Right. What I think we're looking for in terms of timing is obviously if we do a special town meeting, we'd like for it to be done before the May second week annual town meeting. We'd like it to be the primary article, obviously warrant article.
Special town meeting.
A special town meeting. I think in order to do justice, even though I think we have been talking about this for a very long time and doing presentations, I think that the earliest that I would like to suggest that you would entertain possibly doing one would be at the very end of April. I wouldn't wanna do one in the middle of school vacation, I wouldn't wanna do one that that doesn't give the residents enough time to absorb what we're talking about. I would like the opportunity and would plan on doing the education that's required aside from this meeting. And I've spoken with our cable coordinator about that, I've spoken with our finance director and many other people in the community about what we would need to do to make sure that we actually put out as much information as possible.
So can I ask you, what what forms of information, like what are we looking at? Like a flyer, meetings?
I think a combination of those, I think a combination. I've, we've talked about putting together a video and also making sure that we have enough of those meetings that are gonna be necessary, including even if we can entice the Department of Revenue to be part of that discussion, I think that's really important. So I don't want people to be thinking this is just an idea of a town administrator or just this board. There are other players who know our financial situation quite well and they understand that we have a revenue problem. We don't have a spending problem, we have a revenue problem and there's only certain ways to deal with that. And having said that, you know, they like to see a community try to solve it on their own and they like to see a community attempt to do that before they actually really offer their expertise and services. And I'm talking about this in advance of a receivership, you know, they wanna see us succeed in trying to address that the best possible way. So I think two months is adequate amount of time to at least get the people the information and have them come to town meeting and take a vote on it regardless of what the outcome is. If I keep pushing it beyond that, then we have a much more uncertain fiscal year 2019 and we also have a really uncertain way of closing that gap for that next budget cycle.
Would it, would it not behoove the board though to to reach out to our school committee and set up a joint meeting? Since there is such a large gap from the three-year plan to what was presented to us several months ago, I I know, I've spoken with the chairwoman briefly and she she had said that they'd be more than happy to meet with us. I don't know if we've reached out to them yet, but I sincerely think we should and I I don't know how anybody else on the board feels, this is my own opinion, because I I think there's, there's a large amount of room in between those two numbers, the the three and a quarter and the eight and a half. And and I'm pretty sure that the school committee is willing to work with us as as much as they can to help us shorten that gap. So if we could reach out to them to set up a joint workshop, I think it would behoove the town and everybody in it.
Well, I I know that Justin and I have talked about perhaps using the expertise in a, in a forum kind of way with the Department of Revenue to look at, you know, the the budgets of each area, whether it's municipal or school, because at the end of the day, we have to come up with a figure that will actually support those for a good number of years. That's the point of it, it's not a one-time thing, this is not about their budget projection just this year, it's about living for the next five years to to seven years on on something that is going to be able to grow at a rate that is very, very reasonable and modest, but at the same time meets the needs of both the school and the municipal side.
And I agree with that and maybe once we have that information, that's information we can share with them as well.
I agree, Tommy, I think, I think the school budget being such a large portion of our budget is, and without, and it's not in our control per se to set or to to present, that that is the duty of the the school committee, but I think it's, it's such a big piece and it makes such a big impact when when we're not aligned. So we need to, we need to reach out, I agree with you, Tommy.
Well, I think we could get both the Department of Education as a, as a representative that would work, I think, in partnership with somebody from the Department of Revenue. It's not unusual for them to offer, to try to to better understand the positions of two communities, to get them to a point in which there's a a strong, not just understanding, but commitment to going forward toward creating balanced budgets that will grow in a, in a reasonable way over a period of time. So I think we could absolutely put something like that together. I don't want to only do that and not set.
No.
Potential time because.
I agree.
Time will tick away and it will, you know, be summertime before, you know.
So if we, if we plan a special town meeting for the end of April, and this is not an agreement or disagreement, but it is to present the townspeople with their options and how they're going to, how our town is going to operate, we would need a ballot vote also. So when would that occur?
Well, that has to happen after it passes, the first thing is it has to pass.
Forty-five?
Days. Yeah, well, yeah, I can't, we wouldn't want it to be conflicting with the May meeting, so I would anticipate it would be after that, but before July, sometime in between.
Okay.
And that's why it would make sense. I I think when you're looking at the month of April, you know, the week of April thirtieth, well, April thirtieth is the last day, it's a Monday.
Twenty-third.
Well, people are coming back through the Patriots weekend, if you were to have it the twenty-third or twenty-fourth, I would be concerned that we would be missing a large number of residents who may be inclined to want to participate only because they're coming back from spring vacation. So if you were gonna have it that week, I would suggest you have it on the thirty, the twenty-sixth Thursday or Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, or just have it on the thirtieth. I mean, it's, to me, it's, it's a Monday, people are used to a town meeting being on a Monday. I think it gives people enough time, I like the, I would like to have that week as well to continue the commitment for educating people and it'll be faster here than you can shake a stick at, you know? So, I mean, we still would need the regular posting time requirements and you need a public hearing and and those things, so I think, I think April thirtieth would work, I think, best, but.
I'll hear a motion to establish a special town meeting for the thirtieth of April.
Why can't we just have the month, this regular town meeting and the special town meeting at the same time?
It would probably be lengthy and as we know, I know our moderator tends to, what is around ten o'clock? We have to decide whether we're gonna continue through the night or adjourn to the next day.
Also, I would like to remind this board for the ones that have really been attending finance committee meetings and regularly, that it will be very difficult to put together your fiscal year 2019 budget without really having a better understanding of where this town is gonna go. So from an administrative perspective, I would not advocate that, I think there's just way too much that's riding on this. It also. It also precludes us from being able to do that outreach to the Department of Revenue as we go along. If we, if the town chooses not to, it just sets up a whole different number of steps that you have to take. So, I think anybody with a lot of town hall and town meeting experience would say that is not what most communities do. So, and they don't. I mean, this is something that should have, I think, time allowed for residents not only to come to understand what it is, but also the time to digest it and then what it also means in the perspective as we're preparing for our budgets.
I was just wondering, because to have, asking town residents to come out twice so close to each other, it's kind of, it seems like a lot of...
There's a lot of towns that are having special town meetings right now for marijuana, legislation, articles. So, it's actually quite routine. When you have an issue that's really important, that should stand alone, most communities know that. And I've been a board of selectmen member, a school board member, and a state official, and it's not unusual. And it's not imposition to town residents. It's a way of allowing town residents the full opportunity to vet the issue and make a decision. And I think in all the years that I know I've served, it's always better to do that than to try to duck it in under something or have lengthy, lengthy meetings and putting it at the end. I mean, there's a lot of tactics that are used in communities to prevent them from having a real, full-fledged discussion and vote on a particular issue. So, I would strongly recommend that the board not do that.
I agree. It needs its own...
Those few weeks to really digest what's happening and then take an informed vote at the annual.
So, we're looking at...
Monday, April 30th?
Have we contacted...
I was going to say, I know I had...
The school and the moderator?
Not the school, I think, knows that we were started to talk about it, but no. I think initially, we have another scheduled meeting coming up rather quickly if there's a need for that to be changed. I know the town clerk is aware of it. I know I've had some discussions with the town moderator that we would be likely needing something, whether it was going to be the last week of April or the week before that. So, I think, knowing how important it is, I doubt that we won't have the support, yeah, from all the different stakeholders.
I just want to make sure that they can be present.
That's right.
So, contingents on...
Well, I think if we need to come back and take a new vote, then we can do that. I don't want to make it contingent. I want a firm vote that we're either doing this without...
Do I hear a motion?
So, I make a motion to schedule a special town meeting for the town's residents to consider a two and a half article Monday, April 30th, at the Millville Elementary School at 7:00 P.M.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Rome.
Aye.
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 Nay.
I appreciate the board's vote, and I will make sure that we begin the process of setting that up. And I thank you for that.
Thank you for all your effort in getting this all together.
Well, everybody knows I'm always against taxing. But it's not up to me to decide. It's up to the, so I agree with the town meeting to let the people decide what the people's money is going to be spent on.
I think we should work with what we have, because that's how you make a budget.
I agree, and that's how I'm raised and brought up. But it's always also my duty as a selectman to not be, make the final decision of the tax rate. It's the people.
What's the job of adjusting the tax rate?
Understood, but they need to make the decision if they want a higher rate or not.
And Andrew, I think, you know, it's important to know that over the years, we have decreased, we have cut back. We used to, our town offices used to be open from nine to four, Monday through Thursday, and a half day on Friday. And we kept getting hit and kept getting hit. And our employees went years without raises, and we cut back. We are not even at a level service that we were 10 or 15 years ago. So, to say to work with what we got, we're not going to be able to collect taxes. And if you don't have an infrastructure to collect taxes, then you don't have, you can't run your town. So, I mean, it's an operating system. It's not just, you know, oh, this is what you have and live with it. It's a bit more involved than that.
Well, if you go at home and you make a budget, you have a set income of how much you get paid. If you have not, you don't have enough money, you don't just go and ask for a raise and say that I need it and then get it.
But we also are looking at our local aid, and there's other pieces that revolve, like outstanding funding, our state local aid funding. It's not just that what our budget is, it's also what our cherry sheets say from the government. So, I mean, there's a lot of inner workings that go with this. So, it's not just to say, oh, we have this much money and we live with it. There's a lot more than that. And if you don't have departments running, then you don't have a town operating. So, you know...
I think that for those people, including we have a member of our Finance Committee who is here, and our chairman is away, and he would have been here this evening. But I think anybody who's looked at the hard numbers, you know, it's really, it's politically easy to say you just live within your means. But if you really understand municipal budgeting and accounting, you will see that this town has, over many, many years, produced a balanced budget. And in some ways, produced a balanced budget, you know, by using reserves that were really intentionally, you know, put aside for some other things. But in order to actually pay people on a week-to-week basis or to actually fund our police and fire, you know, they had to make tough decisions. And that's what you do, because at the end of the day, you have to sign things. You have to show up. When you have, you know, very in-depth conversations, which we've had with department heads and with our board here, and I'm talking about dozens and dozens of meetings since I've been here, you know, you can talk easy about, I'm just not in favor of it, you know? But when you have to sit there and do the right thing by the people who are employed to serve the needs of this community. I haven't seen one member here, you know, say, I'll just give up, you know, a stipend. And it's laughable, because if you gave up your $400 stipend as a show of goodwill, it might be interesting, right? But you saw, it's, you know, a $687,000 hole. And it's not because we're spending too much. You have to have things in place. If you want to think that our, you know, our EMTs are not working hard enough and don't deserve 50 bucks, I tell you, go right down and tell them. Because I would never do that to them. And if I thought they were making too much money, I'd go to them and tell them. But there are so many places that, I just showed you that you can cut everybody, everybody. And you're not going to make a dent in this. So, it's just, that's the reality. And at some point in time, you know, it's easy to say, you know, just live within your means. But what does that mean? You know, and when you put the plan up, you know, in front of people, and you follow municipal law, and you follow municipal finance regulations and standards for the state, you wouldn't be able to say that.
It's not, it's a tough nut for anybody to swell. Nobody wants to increase taxes.
Well, there's a lot, a lot, a lot of unfunded mandates handed down between the state...
You're absolutely right.
The state and the federal government.
We haven't received our Chapter 71 money for bussling as a regional school district in how many years?
So, my name's Erica Blake, Deborah Road. I'm on the Finance Committee. I know how you feel, Andrew. I was sitting in the audience a few years ago at a town meeting. The school was asking for a little more money, and I sat there, and I couldn't understand why the town couldn't give $42,000, I believe, at the time. I said, how can they not, how can they just not give it? It's only $42,000. And they said, no. And I said, well, I got to figure this out. Me, as an accountant, sitting there not understanding, there must be other people in the audience that didn't understand either. So, I decided to join the Finance Committee. Now that I've been on the Finance Committee, I've seen every budget in town. I've met with every department. They all run on a shoestring budget. Do I want to pay more taxes? No, absolutely not. But do we need to? Yes. I don't know where you can find $500,000 to balance the budget, but if you can do it, that would make my job a lot easier on the Finance Committee. I'm more than willing to have you sit down with me and find this $500,000. If we don't have to raise taxes, that'd be wonderful.
And not for one year. Not 500 for one year.
Right.
You know, because even with the one-time revenues and the grants and everything, it doesn't matter. It's still not enough.
And you say, run it like a budget at home. I run a budget at home. I run a budget for a multimillion-dollar company. There are increases every year. There are salary increases. There are price increases. The town needs an increase.
Well, we increase each year by two and a half percent.
Right. But did you see what the budgets are going up by?
Yes, and we've also increased the budget for every year.
Right. So, where do you, where do you suggest we cut $500,000 this year?
We have to find it from every place we can. We have to work within our means. If we pass a five and a half, two and a half percent override, that means we can raise the taxes whatever percent we want, which then means what? We've already had people leaving.
But nobody's going to raise it to what you want. Nobody, that's actually incorrect. And if you spend time in government, you'll learn. You can't just raise it to what you want. You know, every single process step still exists within a municipality. You have a Finance Committee. You have a Finance Director. You have a Board of Selectmen. If you didn't think we should have increased the budget last year as a brand-new selectmen member, you could have, you could have said no.
I didn't see the budget until the town meeting.
That's not true. That's not true. And let's not talk about that, because we have plenty of people who, no, we have plenty of people who absolutely did receive that and actually find it very odd that you continue to say that, because you actually had it before you when you voted for it to put it on the ballot. You had it before you from the Finance Committee.
Can I just, Chair, excuse me. Can we stay with the two and a half? And if Mr. Allard has any, needs any more education in regards to budgeting and process, he can meet with any of us here. He can meet with you, and he can go to a Finance Committee or even sit with Justin. But the merits of the two and a half is what we're talking about.
I hear your comments.
Absolutely.
Mike Staples, Thayer Street. Now, my taxes went up 25.6% from the quarter of this year to last year. Has that money been figured into the budget at all?
Yes.
And you still want to do an override? How much more money was brought in when they raised the taxes?
It wasn't, your first two quarters are preliminary, and Jen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the first two quarters are preliminary. They're an estimate of what it is. That estimate was low through our...
For people that are on a fixed income, you call that low?
No, I'm saying it was lower than it should have been, okay? It was on the conservative side. So, when the third and fourth quarters came out, it was sticker shock. So, what they do ask is that you take all four quarters and average them out, and that is your, that is your increase.
Comparing it from last year's quarter or whatever it was to this year, that over $340 that went up on my tax bill. Now, has all this money been figured into the budget?
I will say, I will say to that, my mother-in-law lost her husband this year. She's on a fixed income, 83 years old. Her taxes have gone up $2,000. So, I feel your pain.
I mean, I know a woman who's 94 years old. Her taxes going sky-high.
And we, you know, I'd like to get, you know... I appreciate that we have a principal assessor who can talk to you about that. Any questions that you have, and I would encourage you to do that. We've encouraged people, if they felt that they were unfairly assessed. I will tell you, though, even speaking with the Division of Local Services and the principal assessor who is educated in that field, that the town has actually not been appropriately assessing individual properties for many years. And that is a problem and why you're starting to see that adjustment being made now. But that contributes to the overall issue. That's a discussion that we, you know, would be more than happy to have with you on that front. And I wanted to say that, knowing that for a fact, coming from the state and understanding that, it has, it has actually hurt our ability to do some of the things that would be normal in planning a budget. But it also means that people have been having a lower-than-realistic assessment of their property, but yet if they turned around and sold their property, they would actually be at a much higher level. And that has been happening for a number of years. And they are based on valid sales and, you know, so we have a great assessor. His name's David Manzello. If you haven't called or emailed, I would suggest you do that. And even after the meeting, if you're still here, I can take your name and make sure that he gets in touch with you.
But with the two and a half, if we don't override it this year, you're going to be coming back next year to override it. What is the cap after two and a half, say, gets...
The final goal?
What would be the cap on the tax rate?
It doesn't work that way. What happens is we actually will...
That's what people are afraid of.
Yeah, well, no, no, there's, there's...
Oh, the people are afraid of that.
I understand. I understand. Well, there's going to be, because you have to understand that there are many stopgaps in place. It isn't just some arbitrary tax rate gets set. What happens is you actually look at what it is that you need to operate, both your school, your municipal, you know, on a regular yearly basis. And then you set the budget accordingly, and then eventually you also set the rate to reflect that. So, this is not like you give somebody carte blanche and they just can go willy-nilly on it. It's not going to be like that. It isn't like that right now.
Well, that's what people are afraid of.
That's while working with the state's Department of Revenue.
When you vote with Staples, you'll know what that number is. You'll know what that dollar figure is.
And you'll know how it plays out, because an override related to municipal operations and the fact that we haven't had that, you know, it will be something that's tiered. And by the time you get to the third or fourth year, you don't notice it at all, because what we're trying to do is right-size the budget, reset the tax rate, so it actually allows us to survive from one year to the next.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good questions. Thank you for coming.
So, we're set.
We have one more question. From Ms. Regeria. Jane Regio, 7 Diana Circle. I just have a procedural question, and if you've covered it before, my apologies. But could you explain to us how, so April 30th, there's a meeting to discuss the idea of an override? Then...
Special town meeting vote.
Well, it's to vote to allow us to...
There will be a vote at that point in time.
It's a vote to allow us to have a ballot election.
To have the discussion.
To have a ballot election. So, what budgets are submitted for the May? Well, that's April 30th, and you don't have a ballot vote until after the May meeting. What budgets are presented at the May meeting?
You'd still be doing your regular annual fiscal budget. What I would hope is that we have a discussion before you set your budget at the end of March, right, March 22nd. You know, between now and then, we should have some discussions about what that would look like from the first draft that we saw compared to where we would be expecting that. I think you saw some of the trends that Justin had put in where the school budget has been. I think what we would want to know in advance, obviously, when we go to town meeting, at a special town meeting, there will be, you know, an estimated number that's associated. So, I would hope that we would have that discussion to align the fiscal year 2019 budget with what we put forward in that revane. And if not, you still have to put together a, you know, a very reasonable budget and one that meets your needs. And at the end of the day, if, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't get balanced, like I said, it's much easier for us to try to fix this problem than to have somebody else try to fix it for us.
No, but I guess I'm just looking to help to understand the process.
I know what you're asking.
So, there's, and I hope that we will develop a regional, a reasonable budget that sustains the school, to move it forward, to be strategically competitive with the area schools in the region. That's our goal. We're not looking for gold. I will say, the number that's up there for education includes a lot of things. It says no capital project, but it does include the capital project that's the roof. It includes transportation, which is state mandated. So, there's a lot of things in there. People are looking, oh, the schools want so much money. There's a lot of things in that dollar amount.
I think I even said, we're not here to absolutely not vilify the school. The school has certain needs, but we also know that we have to come up with some kind of number that is reasonable for each year.
So, we come up with this regional, reasonable number, and at the May town meeting, it's voted based on the monies that the town has available currently.
I think that's really a Finance Committee, because we ran into this in, was it 2012-ish? We did an...
We had two budgets.
We had two budgets. Now, what does FinCom decide to do? Because they, they own the budget for annual town meetings. Because they, they own the budget for annual town meeting, so that's really a FinCom question, like, how are they going to present that budget? Is it going to be, this is the money we have, and if, if the override goes, then we have this? I don't know how they'll go about it this year.
Yeah, I don't either, that's fine.
That's kind of a FinCom question, because they, like I said, they own the budget for the annual town meeting.
So let's assume maybe that there are two budgets? Does the town in May vote on both of those, should then override past election?
That's what we did in 2012. I cannot speak for FinCom.
I think it happened that they voted on the override first, and then that's when you decide which budget you're going to submit, is that what?
No, because it really comes down to the ballot vote.
Because it has to come to a ballot.
It comes to the ballot vote in the end.
So I just looking for clarification, I'm not.
I don't think, I think that's why we're going to have some public information sessions.
There you go. Once you've set the date, then the other things will come into motion.
Thank you, Jane.
You all set?
Yep.
All right. Last item, new business is a master plan and zoning bylaw diagnostic. They're comprehensive documents, and frankly, I haven't had the opportunity to totally digest.
Mr. Chairman, the reason why it's before you is so that you can actually take a review of the drafts for both the master plan and the zoning diagnostic. There are two plans that we received technical expertise from the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission as a result of a comprehensive grant. And the reason why we're trying to do this is to identify areas that we can work towards for a plan. This master plan has been something of an elusive butterfly for the town for many years. And when I was interviewed, we committed to actually getting it done. And so, at this point in time, it is a comment period. It is something that has been circulated among department heads that would have relevance related to the types of suggestions that are made in here, along with the zoning diagnostic, we had several meetings on that. So all we're saying is, at this point, take a read on it. There's something in there that you feel that you would like to comment on, we will forward them to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. We are trying to wrap up the grant, the grant has given us a brief extension. And so, you know, at the end of the day, we'd like both the Board of Selectment and the Planning Board, if they have any other comments about it, to be able to do that. So it's only before you to take home, read, and comment.
Comment closes when?
We'd like to try to do it the first week of, second week of March.
Okay.
Review and comment.
Mm-hmm. And by getting these done, it will open us up to hopefully some other grant opportunities.
On the agenda is the Lockstone Millville Regional School District Superintendent finalist I need, I would like to compliment the Search Committee for coming up with three excellent candidates, and the School Committee for their fine work. And there were three candidates who would become, would find jobs in this cycle.
They made the decision Thursday.
Yeah, made the deci.
Do you want to just come up and just let us know at the School Committee?
Yeah.
Let you know a certain amount, I can't let you know a final amount, or a final deal, but.
I know, I, I only know I read about it.
I was just going to announce, though, that where they come from, Dr. DeFalco, who's, who is the finalist. He's presently working in the city in New Bedford. And then we had Dr. Trollette from Uthbridge, and Kevin McNamara from Lincoln. All good candidates. And the School Committee is talking to Dr. DeFalco at this point in time.
So the, the School Committee made the decision to enter negotiations with Dr. DeFalco. He has agreed to enter into negotiations with us, and that's exactly what we're doing. The lawyers are talking to the lawyers at this point. We're excited, we're hopeful, and hopefully we'll have an announcement soon.
One of the reasons we did put it on it is because of both, I know several members here had participated by, you know, through the process, we appreciated being part of that. I know having them come and visit with the municipal side was very helpful, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide that feedback.
It was to us as well, and I really appreciate the people who came every night, because it's hard to take three nights in a row of time and effort, and come in on a Friday when you don't work, when the office isn't open. I know you work, but, so it was appreciated both ways.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Selectments forum, anyone here have something to say? Anything to say? Tom?
All set, thank you.
So we'll move right into the Town Administratives before. As if you were not busy or.
Yeah, well, it's important to review the things that are not necessarily controversial or difficult or challenging, but have bright notes. I would like to make an announcement that this town has just received a, from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, a $200,000 grant in the area for complete streets, and that will help towards our overall central street project, in particular, looking at accessibility along our sidewalks, and it's, it's part of our overall prioritized plan. And as you saw up on the slide, that brings up our grant award for that particular program to almost $230,000. And so that was a really good, you know, opportunity. I tried for $400,000. I'll take the $200,000. There's a lot of communities that didn't even get that.
Aim high.
Aim high, you know, whatever comes in, you'll be very grateful. The second is the demolition grant. I just wanted to make sure the board knows that they did make their payment, and so the contractor who took down the mug pump on the 35, 37 Central Street has, has been paid. And there is a little bit more work that needs to be done this spring, and he will be back to remove the asphalt and to beautify the edges. And the head of the grant program has put aside, you know, a small amount of money for us to be able to, to finish off that. But it's all included in terms of the contract, but I wanted to do a few other things that would make it enticing to somebody to actually repurpose and redevelop the site. So that has been executed. Then on the third item is Community Compact IT Grant. I just wanted to let you know that an actual grant has been submitted that is looking to replace and upgrade and connect the town hall with its other buildings, the police, the fire, and the senior center with a voice over the internet phone service provider. We have that now here in the town hall. I, last year, had made the move that when we were going to do the phone system here, that we would use IT grant money to try to save money on costs for our telephone expenses. It has done that, and it will continue to do that on an annual basis. But it's really not service-oriented to residents when they call and say they want to be connected to the police chief, or they want, have an answer about a burning permit or something, and we need to transfer them. There's no instant connectivity there. One of the things is, we had the entire network evaluated at the Police Department and the Fire Department, and we did note through the review that there are really, aside from terrible bandwidth and things having such a slow rate in terms of service, there's also network security issues. So this particular grant that I've submitted is for like $60,000. Even if we get half of that, we'll just, you know, chip away at the infrastructure needs. But already, I know that there have been issues at both places, and we need to bring them up to the 21st century. The fourth item is the MSBA Accelerated Repair Grant Program. I've been in discussions with the superintendent and also the head of the MSBA about the desire for us to continue with another submission this year, especially for the MES capital items that would fit with the accelerated repair program. The superintendent said he was going to be submitting that on Friday. We had a lengthy discussion about some of the information that had come my way, about, in particular, about boiler replacement and the oil tank related to the boiler, and we have a much better idea of what something like that would cost. And they're looking to make a decision about applicants and grant recipients by June, which would tie into where we have to make decisions about our capital plan and needs for the upcoming year. And then the final one is the OSRP Grant, that's Open Space Recreation Planning Grant. There is a, there was a brief survey that went out with the tax bills in December, and now there is a more lengthy or more refined survey. I don't know if you would like to speak to this as the person who is serving as the board member to that, but there are.
Sure.
Couple key dates that are coming up that are important for the community to know about, and we'll be moving right along on this grant.
So I think it was, I'm trying to think of the, I don't know the date off the top of my head, but the, I was finally able to attend, because they, they meet the same evening as my daughter's Girl Scout Troops. So I was able to finally come and attend a full meeting with them. They have done an amazing amount of work. They put out a short survey. It was interesting to hear from the people from CMR.
UC.
UC. The work that they have done. I mean, they kept everyone on track, they, you know, they're highly professional, they're a wonderful group of people to work with. And Mr. Mulvey and Mrs. Maloney, I'm trying to think of who else.
Eric Olson.
Eric, oh yeah, Eric was there, and Eric Olson. And it was really a matter of going through and finalizing that next survey, more in, more details, more kind of educating people about what we have in town versus what's being used, how do we want to use it, and prioritizing that, so that when they put the final draft and goals together, that it reflects the community. And I was surprised and disappointed that, they said, I think it was 2% is typically the surveys that come back, that, that's a good showing. So I'm hoping that Millville will, will pull through. I know there'll be a, they're reviewing the draft right now of the, the survey. There'll be a paper draft available, not draft, when it's finalized, there'll be a paper survey available for those who like to do it that way, but there will also be an online component for people, for the open space, so Open Space and Recreation Plan. And this ties in with the, the master plan, and which will help with grants, not just at the state level, but at the federal level, to have those. But that, that group is a fine-tuned machine.
I will pass that on.
They were, I was.
I actually speak with Pam fairly frequently, and I've been very impressed with all they've done.
Yep, and they, they really knew exactly what their, what their mission was and how to get to it, and so they're, they're doing a great job there. So keep an eye out, because I think the survey will be going out Monday.
Yep, February 26th.
Yep.
To start, and it'll also be on the website. And then from there, it'll be followed up by an actual community forum that was looking to be held around April 12th. We don't have the, whether we have it here at the senior center, but that's the date that we've put in, so.
Hopefully, we'll get more than 2% of our town.
Actually, we had a good. It sounds worse than it is, but it actually was a healthy number that we had come back.
That's fantastic to hear.
And, you know, they've even left open the possibility of having some surveys available if we don't have a high number at the annual town election to either hand out for those late.
That's a great idea.
The stragglers, that we can still probably incorporate them into the survey, so, so that's where the Open Space and Recreation Committee stands.
Hopefully, this all contributes to new growth going forward.
Well, it, it will contribute to being able to do projects that we, right now, we are not eligible to receive state funding from the normal environmental division from the state. And until you file this with the state, you cannot be eligible for conservation acquisition lands, you can't be for rails to trails, nothing. So until we submit this, and we got a grant to write this, so I'm very happy about that. And then, you know, the next thing will be to, to recognize an element of the plan and put that forward for funding. And so we'll be ready for that in July. And we have, I think, an exceptionally good proposal for that, and hopefully we can get some money for it.
Very good.
Again, this isn't in the budget. So other than signatures, your next meeting will be March 5th, Monday, March 5th, and we'll be communicating about the timeline for the special town meeting before that. It's all the same, exact same, it's just a copy for National Grid, copy for Verizon, and a copy for us, so we'll have an original on file once it's attested to.
I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Second.
Hi.
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 Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you all for coming tonight.